To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll call this meeting over. Those present are Darrell Baker, John Quirk, David Matthews, President, Charles Banks, Commissioner, Charleston County Commissioner. We begin the motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission Meeting, that was held on December 15, 2014, at 16:00. No more. Any further discussion? All those in the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Have you been unanimous? Public comment. We have Percy Sims with the Alcohol Woodville Project.
I thought you was just coming to see my last meeting.
Well, you know, this is gonna be the last time I'm here to address this. You know, we have such a major quagmire here that I have got tons and mountains of paperwork and I brought it all in here. So we've got 1178 lower mud. We've got 1186 alcohol. 1178 was changed to 1393. So I'm doing some research and I pulled up a public service order on 1393. And gentlemen, it's about as plain as day what has happened here. They have combined the two projects. And we've got a case 13, the CN case, the certificate case for the alcohol project, was 13-1356, PWD CN, public service. Guess what? It's got Mo River all over, Route 3. What they did was use the pretense of the underrun, $1,168,000, to tie it in to alcohol. When the smoke cleared away, they, the last accounting I've seen, they did meters, they did blah, 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 it was like 800, 900,000, so there could have only been maybe 240 left. But I see no order of what that was happening, neither in the funding scenario does it show that much anywhere. But I guess one, and then another very disturbing thing, in this very certificate filing case, in the back, let me read you, number 21, references to third-party water person here. Now, we knew there was a West Virginia American Water contract between West Virginia American Water and the Lincoln PSD, but it kept referencing, and there's tons of paperwork, a third-party. Let me read you number 21 in this certificate filing.
Is this that 1393 certificate filing?
This is the 13-1356, which is the public service gospel for when a project is completed or, you know, ready to go. Number 21 is water purchase contract. You propose to purchase treated water from Mingo County PSD. Therefore, you must revise the existing water purchase contract from the RD 42-30 unless you receive an exemption from RD, and I'm assuming RD is more developed. So, let me tell you, there is so many, there is so many questions in here, and then I think that alcohol was never meant to go through, because we have this case right here, this 1664 case, that shows alcohol was turned in, and even a rape case done on it in '07. And I got documentation from the DEP that said the project was turned in, completed in '08. So I think that is the reason, we get to a certain point, and this is deja vu, the third time, '97, 344, we were on target. Then they did the Garrett's Bend, Molly's Branch, then we went by the way. Then came the turn of the century when we had 2005, 58, again. Well, lo and behold, Priestley Ridge and all the others went in it never, and we also have filings in here from the Public Service Commission where that one was turned in. And if you look at the minutes, you read the minutes, there's any references in there for Randy Watson at Thrasher, there was two that I specifically remember where he said he would have to delay, given the report, he would get it next month because he had not had a chance to get there to survey the size of the pipe and the tank existence. So that's, you know what, it's way beyond me, so I have to seek further help. I don't intend to let it die. If we lose our project again, I want to know why.
Do you want me to say? No, I just wouldn't, you know, like what I said before, I think, you know, we should be looking into this.
Well, you know what, it's been, you know what, I've been, you're probably tired of seeing me, and quite frankly, I'm tired of looking at this stuff. I want to give it to somebody else, I don't want to deal with it, because it's getting out of hand, it's, because now they're, you know, I don't know where we're going. I don't know where our money is, because if you look at it, 1178 was A, 1393 is A, now the alcohol is B. All of the three face ones are put in as A. So I want to know this certificate filing, we thought it was for us, but is it for A or is it for B?
Percy, have you prepared any kind of, you know, questions for the engineers at the Lincoln PSD, what kind of questions do you need to hear?
Well, you know what, in, like I said before, how critical they're gonna be by themselves, because this didn't happen, with all due respect, without Michael Griffith and Ron Thor's submitted.
Well, and I think, you know, people put things down on paper, submit them to them, you can look at their answers and say, you know, because I, like I told you before, I'm not technical enough, but you know a lot more about this than I do, and I don't know the, you know, the design and things like that, and things happen, and, you know, we all know that we've had problems with that PSD, you know, not with the people that are there, and they haven't been as far as the board directors, but, you know, somewhere along the line, you need your answers and we need answers too, you know, there's other things that are looking at, as far as, you know, funding things that have happened with the PSD that are concerned with all of us, I think, so as that is ongoing though, you know, to me it seems appropriate if you could submit whatever questions you have to that, to PSD's engineers, or to PSD, ask them to give answers from the engineers, and then we'd like to talk to them.
Well, you know, I had asked Jonathan these things, and, you know, until I got these documents from the DEP and that, when you ask a person of that caliber, you expect that they're gonna give you the answer. But Jonathan didn't give me the correct answers, and neither did Michael Griffith give me the correct answers, because with alcohol, when I first seen the first submitted, and I went to Mike Muscat, boy, and I said, "Mike, this is not gonna fly. You're not gonna take the DEP money for that. I'm gonna get it anyway," and he saw what he was talking about, and I showed him that, and then I asked Michael Griffiths, and he said, "Oh, they're not, that, you're not combining those." He said, "That's just a mistake, I'll take care of that." Well, guess what?
Well, and I think if you would address those questions in writing, and respond in writing, and then, you know, and you, maybe look, and I trust everybody till, you know, we find out we can't trust them, but, you know, when you respond to things in writing, it's not hearsay.
Yeah, well, whenever, yeah.
Right, he wears his hands of those answers.
We have a project that was, well, USDA told me a year ago, the project was totally funded. She said, "This is not being used," yet the project totally funded. Now it's been the bid, and it's not being awarded, so what's happened?
Well, I mean, check on that for the last week, and the reason the bid had not been awarded is because of litigation's going on with the engineering outfit. I mean, they got them frozen.
But they, they knew that a year ago, because I was at the meeting.
I just asked the question, public service questions that's going on, and basically said, "The only problem is that litigation's on the project, off-line with the emergency."
It was a litigation tribe.
Right.
This tribe was the original engineer, and it was my understanding that there was, actually, there was money, federal money, that was gonna take care of that, that, you know, whatever the settlement agreement was there, and that everything, but I think that it's, there's so much federal money involved. The information that you have, I would take it to the federal agencies and let them, let them go through it.
I don't have a choice, because we have to have some answers.
Now, I think this is well beyond our scope.
You're right.
Thank you, Percy. Jim Oldacre with Fire Lit.
You want me to say comments now, or do you wait till it comes up on the agenda?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay, well, on behalf of the Lincoln County Firefighter Association, we know that your decision for the final order is on the agenda. We appreciate the commission's support in the matter, and we urge you to approve it when we get to that matter.
Thank you, Jim.
And I also think it's important to note, for the commission's benefits, you haven't seen the figures yet, and for the citizens. Even though taxes, as a whole, have increased, the value of both levies, due to the restructuring and the devaluation of minerals, are actually less money to the citizens than they are currently. The current call is, actually, is higher than the total call of the, of the proposed renewal cycle of the levy. So, you know, it may be a small amount, but it is in fact less, so it's one part of the taxes that seem to be going the other way, so, but we appreciate your support for the matter, and we urge you to approve it.
Thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda, we have Howard Sharp and Doris Sharp. You all speak.
I think I'll speak.
Okay.
I just wanted to inform the county and the commissioner that I was asked to go down to DEP on Wednesday, my wife and I, to receive a recycling assistance grant of a little over $30,000. So, that's, that's on the positive news for the county.
Doris?
Well, mine is just a personal comment. I was not born in this county, but I've been here for over 20 years. Last few years, I've seen quite a change in a little bit of everything. And first of all, I want to comment on the strong women in this county, not myself are doing volunteer work, but Percy Sims, and now we got Phoebe Harless, the first woman on the commission, Brenda Askew, the first woman on the water department. And I just say this to the women out there, if anything at all you want to do, put that right foot forward and make us start to do something, because I'm looking forward to the new year, because I want to see the women, the force in this county explode. And now, we need the men, don't get me wrong, we still need you here, but I just think that the women are finally beginning to come out of their shell and be in the leadership, and I'm so glad to see that. We think that in there.
That's something we've always known. Next on the agenda, we have Marcella Stowers and Paula Nelson. You all speak separately about Morton Drive.
I'm a resident of Morton Drive, and Morton Drive is a private road, and it's owned by the residents of Morton Drive. If it's paved, we pave it. If there's snow removed, we remove it. And it's in our deeds that that road is in fact part of our property. It's communal property, and we are, we are happy with the way things are. We have our own restrictions, we can't have livestock and whatnot, but we can have our dogs, and we know that's an issue in the town of Hamlin, and we're not sure exactly what other issues we might encounter, but I opened up the county paper yesterday, and it says that it has been requested that Morton Drive become part of the town of Hamlin. Now, first of all, it was a surprise to us. I know that the town of Hamlin has been wanting to get Morton Drive in, onboard for that, but prior to reading this in the paper, no residents in, on our hill, other than just passing comments that I have had with the fine mayor, I respect him and I understand what he's trying to do, but we had a meeting once, and we have a petition, and we are opposed to having Morton Drive incorporated, or annexed, whatever the legal jargon is, into the town of Hamlin. And we have every person that lives on that hill that is a homeowner, with the exception of three people, two that could not be reached, and one that's in Florida in the bright sunshine. Now, I will tell you that those people would be more than happy to also add their names to this petition. So, we just, we weren't on the agenda, and since it was the 11th hour, we just thought we might want to come here during the public comment and let our feelings be known about this situation. So, if, I don't know whether to give it to you, or to give it to the mayor, or what.
Well, we'll just make a copy, we'll keep a copy, give a copy to him.
Okay, all right.
But we haven't opened up a period of public comment yet on this.
Well, we kind of want to nip that in the bud, because I think the Mr. Mayor doesn't understand that it is a, and he told me this morning, and I will give him that, I had a call in to him yesterday, and he couldn't be reached, he was gonna return my call after this meeting, and he says if it is a public road, I'm not a public road, a private road, then it can't be done. But, you know, there are ins and outs and ups and downs, and I know that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands upfront that Morton Drive is opposed to this. Okay?
Thank you. That's all we have for public comment. Next on the agenda, we have, under discussion, concerning possible actions, Larry Stuffer joining a dormant account. Is there any money in this account?
Yeah, actually there is, according to my calculations. I made a copy of a document that I have, so he said we could review it. We received a call from Mary not long ago, we being the Lincoln EDA, concerning if we had an account at Community Trust Bank. And my answer was no, as far as I know, we've never had an account at Community Trust Bank. So, a little bit later, and this has been a few months ago, and I should preface it with, I commend Mary for finding this, it was absolutely very good, and I think she brought this to our attention. We received the copy, a copy of what you have in your hand, it's a, actually, it's a 1099 form, for interest income in the amount of $13.26 to the Lincoln County Development Authority. So I visited the bank and presented this to them and said, "What is this?" Well, it's a dormant account, or inactive account. And because we're not, we being the current officers, and Director of the EDA are not signers on the signature card, we really couldn't get a lot of information. But to update that, if we had signature cards filled out by our current officers, then they could reveal the information to us, and that's bank policy and probably was writing In looking at this, she did mention that this account was opened in 1983, and we've known nothing about during that time, because it has our name, but it has the address here. Now, the interest income is $13.26. It's a now account, which is very akin to the money market accounts. Money market accounts are now paying one-tenth of one percent. If you do that math on this $13.26 per year, it means that account has approximately $13,200 something dollars in it. And we know nothing about it. I have the, the signature cards and papers ready for my board officers to sign, but in the interest of full disclosure, I didn't feel like that was appropriate until we bring it publicly to the county commission and get your thoughts, and basically a blessing on going ahead with that, because I just don't think that would be the way to approach it. I don't know anything about the account, its origin, like I said, it was opened in 1983. My suspicions are that that was about the beginning of the EDA, and that that was probably some kind of seed money that was put there for the EDA, and then, once the EDA got up and going, it just kind of stayed there. And it was not in my time, nor my predecessor's time, we didn't know anything about it. So, I'm asking you for direction, we'd like to go ahead and sign the signature cards and access the money, but without your blessing, I don't feel that my board would be comfortable doing that.
Have we found any record, and our records of what happened in the Mayberry, or if we go back, you and that caller?
I can't find anything other than when that came in.
Yeah.
No, that's it, it's.
Well, one thing you can do though, is once you get a favorable access to that account, you can get the history of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we can access.
So, so that would help us too, because my thinking is, we got to really even know what that money was meant for, I figure it's for the EDA.
I figure as well.
But if it was there, kind of, I, you know, I just don't know, but I think the best thing to do, as far as I can tell, is be able to access the account, you know.
Yeah, if you could get, like, the month it was open, and we could look maybe in the minutes, I don't know if they're, I mean, you know.
And it probably doesn't, like, know it's supposed to be useful and things like that.
Would you feel comfortable if we would, you know, the EDA to access the account?
Yeah.
With the signature cards?
I don't have.
I'll make the motion for you to.
I'll say goodnight.
Any further discussion?
That the EDA go ahead and fill out the signature cards and access it.
Yeah, and you can, once you find out what you can, and just bring it back and let us look at it.
I'll do that.
This is for the EDA to access the account. Any further discussion? All those in the table, please say aye.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, unfinished business, we have the heart septic system. Bill Dowd, do you be here with us today? His mother passed away.
I talked to Hoss yesterday, did he, did he kind of, have you talked, have you talked to him since?
Since yesterday, no.
Okay, go ahead, what you, what you had.
We're still at a standstill, the only information I do have is that the duty shop, formerly, they, when they were in the other location, they were being charged, she was being charged $16 a month for water, which $16 for water equates to 1,800 gallons or less on a commercial account. So, and she doesn't know exactly, she's trying to access the records on actually how many gallons she has, there's no way of really determining the amount of water she's using now without putting some type of gauge on it, but that was the, I received a call just before I came in this morning from her, saying that she actually had gone back and had the PSD, the Lincoln, Logan PSD, determine what her bill was, and based on the gallons of usage at the time. So I'd say that'd be a pretty good target, she said, the business is about the same.
The only thing that I have to add to that, when I talked with the boss, Farley, is that they, I guess three people met the other day, so we didn't have a forum for that.
We had, we were scheduled to have a board meeting Tuesday night, three of the seven current board members were there, and so we couldn't have, couldn't have a board meeting, but we had discussion with no action, other than just discussing what's going on, where are we at, what type of information we need to provide to the, to the commission. We, I did provide Mary, request of the commission, the information for bank accounts and other things like that, but as far as the septic system, we're at a standstill. Our general discussion was, we were kind of at a standstill because the contractors kind of left us hanging.
That's what I understand, I mean, I know that, that was a problem as far as the instructions he was giving, and the work that he did, and things like that, didn't really kind of.
And he came back one, and he came back one time, when one of the gentlemen that was going to provide the field dirt, was there, he wasn't there when he arrived, and when he was still there, truck showed up, he says, "If you weren't here on time, I'm leaving." And that was quote-unquote from the guy delivering the, the field dirt that was required as part of the, or his contract.
Yeah, and then, for everyone's information, I just basically said that, you know, you guys need to get their head on your community board, make sure you get people there that can act on it, and.
Absolutely.
And I think you're going in the right direction, trying to accomplish what you can, but, you know, we really need your board to tell us, you know, which direction they want us to go on things, and I, and I do feel that there's some difference in, in what Rick feels needs to be done, and maybe what the board feels needs to be done, and things like that, so, you know, I don't, I don't know, it's a bad time of year to have meetings on things like this, and I don't know how much you get done here in the next couple of weeks or whatever, but if you could let me know when your next meeting is, and tell your members I'm gonna be there.
Second Tuesday of January.
Well, and we'll try to get, and we want to look for a resolution that I can bring back to the commission and say, "This is what you guys want to do," because I think this thing's kind of went on long enough, and I think it's more, I just think it's time that maybe we urge you or poke you a little bit, or whatever, and I'm not saying you guys are not doing a good job, we need to, we need to figure this out as quickly as we can, because I think it's, you wait longer and longer and longer, it may cost more and more and more.
Well, it's, it's very hard to, to run a center like that with, can't even have, can't even get a quorum.
Right, but, well, that's one of the things we want to look at after this year, as far as, you know, constitute these, these different places, and get people in there that are willing to work, and things of that nature. And I also talked to Hoss a little bit, which I'll talk with your board when I come up there, about, I'd like just to see, you have a budget developed that, that we can actually look at over the next fiscal year, when we meet in March, to determine what we can or can't do, and that way we'll have a better idea, because I, in talking with Mr. Farley, I told him, I think we need to look at all of this, as we go through the year, cutting back on what the commission's part of, of the extent is, and try to become more autonomous for the community, and things of that nature. So, that'll be things that we can discuss when you get up there, but I do appreciate you guys that do show up and do work, we really appreciate that, I mean, because it's, you find yourself getting into these situations that there are a lot bigger problems develop after you get into them, and I think that's the situation we've gotten into at the Hoss Community Center, but I think there's a lot of positive things going on there, I know they had a basketball tournament this week, or this Friday, and they made money off that or something of that nature.
We had Mingo Central and Lincoln County do JV and varsity scrimmage games.
Well, I think that's important to get the community into the, into the site, and, you know, and have a place for the kids to participate and things like that, and I think it's a really important thing to keep that going, but I, I do like to see us get a little more efficient, you know, and be able to have an idea, have some kind of plan of what we want to do over the next fiscal year.
I think with what Rick Dowd said, we were, we're to add a, we had to do, I guess, what Rick was saying, as far as what the septic tank was going to cost us, about $8,000. I was under the impression it would be more, but I guess from what we've already set aside for the septic system, if we were to do anything additional, it would be about $8,000. So whenever he gets back, you know, we can talk with him about that. Hey, I also want to say thanks to you guys for providing us with, you listen to your members, your board members, and your members, I've spoken with Mary, and we've been trying to do this out here, getting a list of the members and minutes from your board meetings, just, not just with, you know, your organization, but also people at the community center, people that we actually give money to, so we can put it on our website, whenever you have events, like basketball games, different things like that, things that, if you can bring us some pictures, we can put that on our website, how should people just move on, and make the, you know, I feel like that if people can see what's going on, like down in, you know, down in Hoss or at McCorver, then it may provide a little bit of motivation to other people, other people may want to get involved. So, I like, I appreciate you all giving us all that information, and we're gonna actively post that to our website, so we can try to keep all that up there.
All right.
Thanks.
But the commission wants the financials and the minutes, well, the minutes will be as they come, the financials once a month with the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, well, we probably will be posting the financials with, but we would like to have, just keep a copy of that on file, that way we know what's going on. If anybody has any questions, they can come in and look at us.
Well, actually, our bank account is under the name of Lincoln County Commission, Hoss Community Center, so if the commission would like that, be a signatory on, on the checks.
Oh, no, I think that'd be fine, you guys do.
But I do. Where do you have visibility over that?
Right.
About no blank check, that's visibility over.
You know, my concern was that the original figure exploded like $25,000 or something of that nature, and I thought that was a little much, and, you know, so if we've got, and I, with the comments President's made there, you know, I think that's a brutal number on the project things, but I do want us to be thinking more, you know, upfront, how we can handle the cost of operations and things like that.
Thank you.
Things, we don't have anything else under unfinished business. And next is new business, I'd like to turn your attention to an authorization for kind of a loan for the Lincoln PSD, was asked at the last commission meeting, problem with Mr. Gable, we will not be able to legally present, present them on top of the loan or any line of credit, because it's not basically legal, so I'd like to take that off of new business. Alright. So, have you all seen the new business? Do you have any questions or comments? Other than that, if there's not any questions or comments, I'd like a motion to approve all new business except the authorized. Any further discussion? Officer Bailey, please say aye.
Aye.
Would that be unanimous, the motion? Next, we have commission concern communication. Mr. McCann?
First, to start, what Ford said, I think if we go out to Hart's Community Center, since we can't get a form that the board had, maybe get a couple of women on there and...
I agree. Somebody needs to come in there and give a start.
Give them a chance. I've just got a couple of comments. This, you know, my time is down, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I've had so much help. You know, you can't do anything by yourself, but you can, you start with your family, and if they push you a little bit, that helps, and they support you a whole lot, it helps. But when you get in this thing of politics, you're here all the time, and you got to have a tough skin. Not that means skin or mind. You got to have, you got to be tough. But that's, you know, that's the fun part of being able to see issues. Just because you don't agree with them, don't mean it's not the best issue. But those things happen because we're human. But I've just been so blessed to have people who, you know, put it on the wrong group that I like, or some group that I don't like. You know, we have that difference when you get in politics. But the secret of it is, being able to see that those people who are elected by the people to be the people's voice, that they are able to put aside those little personal differences and work for the people. And that's our job, is work for the people. And I've always felt like the commissioner, I mean, you're in the courthouse, everybody elected, and people get jealous, and whatever, those things happen. But the commissioners, I think, are sitting in a seat where they can sometimes put the glue on and sort of hold people together and work together. And I think it's important that we do that. Because I think when you go out there and you campaign, and you talk to people, I don't think anybody who out there in the campaign is... My number one objective is to cause chaos or dislike. I think like, you've got to work for many, you know, through that voter. So, I think what you forget sometimes is, are we employed by the voters to do their job? And that's how I see it. We have to do that. We have to be able to carry out that will, and don't mean you got to do it all the time. But you've got to keep that in the back of your mind, that this is why you're here. I just think all the voters, all the people in Lincoln County, forgive me, just the chance to work and be part of this county, and it's just good that, you know, I've had that chance to do that, and it's good that other people... When I first came on the commission, Doug Walder had just had a big victory. We talked about, you know, Ms. Harless being her first female, and that's great. Doug Walder being the first Republican, and I don't know when. But he was so kind of work, and we did a good, got along fine and all that. But that is, you know, it showed me that Doug had the right heart, had the right nerve and friends to do the job. And I think that's the way we have to be, is just try to do what's good for the people. You can't go wrong. Other than that, I'd like to definitely say to the Hart's people again, thank you for the work you do, for the EMS people, for, you know, lives you save and all the things you do. I think this commission and the people of Lincoln County will come forth and support this maybe in February. But we certainly, there's no reason not to. We've been used to paying that taxes. Not going to be an increase then. And we know that the service, we can't do without that, whether it be fire or ambulance. So, I do encourage people to enjoy your holidays, and then go February and go through this leg, because we got to do that. We got, that helps our county. We talked about, you know, our county. Well, those kind of things, what makes your county. So, it's important that we keep those things going. The volunteerism, we hear from, you know, Sharps all the time, and people, just step up and do the job. That's what makes your county. It's important that we are able to make that happen. So, just little pieces, and finally you look and say, "Well, you know, it's not just one pedal, it's a whole rose we're looking at." So, we appreciate that, and thank you for letting me serve and be part. Thank you all.
And, you know, I've had the opportunity to be taught by Mr. McCann at Hart's Science. I had the opportunity, he also paddled me, but he paddled the whole class. So, I didn't feel too bad. I had the opportunity in the early nineties to work to, under him, as on board of education, as a superintendent of schools. And I've had the opportunity since 2000 to work with him here on the commission. And I can tell you at all three stages of my interaction with him, I've learned things. He's taught me things. And he's helped me through some things. Now, we don't always agree, and I think that's a good thing. I mean, you always need strong people to be able to get along, but they may not always agree or disagree on things. And I look back to when I first got on the commission, and we were looking at the countywide water plan, which we didn't have one at the time. It was just whoever could get the monies, and you know, would do this and do that and things. But we actually looked at it from a point of view of quality of water, you know, how many people are involved, what can we get funding and things like that. We looked at all those things, which was what was necessary. It took organizing and implementation of the plan, which really had never been done here in the county. And I think, you know, Mr. McCann took lead in that. And, you know, we got people that knew what they were doing, looking at the water problems we had in the county. And, you know, and I know since I've been on the commission and working with Mr. McCann, you know, we've almost doubled the total water in this camp, safe water to make people healthier. So, you know, I think if we look at all the positives that he has brought to this job here, with the especially supporting our angels and firing people, and doing things that was necessary to make this a better place to live. He played an instrumental part in that over the last decade that I've been here, more than a decade that I've been here. So, I want to thank him for those things that he's done for the people of our county, and I want to thank him for those things he's helped me learn, and helped me be able to carry on, being able to provide things for the people of county to know how to do it. Because it's one thing when you want to do something, but you got to know how to do it. And, you know, in most cases, Mr. McCann does that. So, and I want to thank him for what he's given to the people of Lincoln County. And I want to thank him, for the most part, it was a pleasure to work with him.
I'd like to give you all a rundown of what we've, what's going on with the tower at Hamlin, the number one center. Of course, you know, it's under construction. I provided the owner that basically, we had to obtain a right of way for the tower site at Yawkey. I provided the owner of the right of way with some legal documents today. He signs that. He basically gives us a right of way for access and address, and we'll be starting construction on the tower at Yawkey ready soon. So, those two things are, one is in the works, and the other one is actively being built. Also, there's been some concern about, basically, I think we spoke in the last commission meeting about the amount of money that we have provided for the alcohol renewal project, the amount of money that was committed, and how much that we have put into it so far. Our records indicate that we've put in about a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, looking at our budget, we don't owe as much as kind of what we thought we would, alright? So, that's kind of a big deal for us. Just, I wanted to inform you of that, keep you aware of that. The next is the county line. For the Lincoln Boone line, there's, there is a sign up at the correct spot that the highway's installed. Just for Boone County, we haven't had the Lincoln County sign yet, but, you know, they'll put, I guess, put the Lincoln County sign right on, you know, behind the Boone, you know, as you're in your end, but they haven't done that yet. But that has been changed. And the last thing is the town of Hamlin with the annex, trying to expand the boundaries of the town of Hamlin in the next couple of weeks. I'll try to work with the mayor to see if we can figure out basically what we need to do, how to make everyone happy, especially the people up in Morse Hall, Morton Drive, excuse me. Alright? So, I'll take care of that. Our next county commission meeting will be on, looks like January the eighth. So, I'll approve that we adjourn on January the eighth. Officer Bailey, please say aye.
Aye.